What's up everybody, this is the poker coaching study session, today we're gonna be looking at a thirty big blind scenario. We're gonna play the big blind and I want to focus on finding check raise. Let's get started, is this a good one? I've just sold here.
Yeah, you can't do anything with this, you want something between the jack and the eight, some vector draws, something.
He ten? Alright, next time. Okay, so I don't think this is a good check.
Against the tiny bet, we have some raises.
You just call.
Yeah, calling is great, calling is supposed to be for sure.
Oh what, I thought we had pocket fires for a second.
You're going to get married to somebody and say, I do. There's going to be times where.
I do see. So.
It's a, it's a, well, there'll be some raises here.
Yeah, I don't mind if this is a check raise, cuz you can barrel with a six or an eight as well.
Yeah, no, I'm sorry, this is definitely a check raise, I probably had fires.
Before you had the suited fires?
suited fires.
And we're kind of at the bow or end of our straight, our flush draws, which is nice, so.
What kind of size do we go for? Ooh, look at this.
There you go.
Okay. Oh yeah, that's, we gotta go, gotta.
Now we're going both.
Yeah, we got blast off.
Well, I don't think we have to blast off.
No, seven.
Yes, we do, mandatory, totally mandatory.
We have nine high.
Can we not bet small sometimes?
Fifty-five.
So, thinking of our range, but we have a king here, that's a pretty big brick.
What kind of sizing is your king gonna bet to beat all the kookings?
Um, your king's gonna be pretty resilience to the stack to pot ratio, you're just gonna wanna set up a jam. So I think it's gonna go four sometimes, I think it's gonna go seven.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking, so I'm thinking four has to be used sometimes.
Yeah.
Where it is.
Yeah.
Yep. It's gonna set up, it's gonna set up the clean river jam.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, you don't really need to size up here.
I mean, nothing's rea- nothing's really changed as well, like.
I thought seven set up a better jam, honestly.
But we, but we bet, but we bet big, we only get cooled by king.
Yeah, if you change the sim to forty, it'll probably start picking.
The flip side of that is when you bet big, you get him to hold everything other than a king.
Yeah.
Yeah, but anything that's over a nine, we're happy if it folds.
Yeah.
Um, okay, so, turns.
Yeah, he's starting to get short enough that his king's just gonna be indifferent to our size, though. Let's see if it, see if it changes, like what kings he folds if we change sizing.
Oh, he ain't folded any kings yet, right? No matter what.
Yeah, um, I just wanna see quickly, there's another way to put this, but. Okay, my cards, there we go.
By the way, though, it's your jam with fours was fine.
That's what I thought, I thought it was fine.
It mixes, it mixes them.
Can you send me the screenshot of the range?
Fifty-fifty.
Pocket four.
Yeah, not its land dump, but it's, it's uh, in there enough from, for me.
Okay. I thought it was really, really out of line.
It calls too, though, calling's just as well.
And I thought in my mind, majority would be suited aces and suited kings.
Or you wanna save the screen?
Yeah, 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 definitely, actually. So not many suited games. That's the first thing I see, suited aces are in there. But Lewis, why don't you stick with these A-seven, A-five suited? A-four suited, you know, that's, that's always good, right?
Yeah, maybe I should, I don't know, this guy's pretty wide, but this sub guy, but.
Yeah.
And what did he show up with?
He had kings.
Oh, it's in range.
That's.
Oh, oh my god, this guy's range is way wider than this.
So if his range is wider, the jam in fours is better, cuz you're getting more folds, it'll make it a little bit better, so, I mean, it was almost ten percent of aces as it was, so it's reasonable.
Some frequency, like against this, it's probably not too bad, actually.
Reasonable.
So point twenty-eight, we get that, we get exactly that.
Yeah. And if he's wider, it's gonna go up.
Alright, well, wasn't that crazy, Lewis, after all?
Yeah.
Now, on the other hand, if he calls wide, they're, they're gonna go down.
Hmm. I mean, he, he should recall, super wide, though. My bounty's relevant as well, it's like ten dollars.
But. I think maybe we should give up at this point, what do you guys think?
Yeah. Having spades is now bad.
You gotta find some spades to bluff, right?
I think I jam here personally.
You jam?
You're gonna see a king a lot, but, I mean, sometimes, I mean, we bet smaller terms, so he's gonna have like some jacks, some tens, nines, eights, which will fold.
Like my, my number one question, I've heard a thorn barrel, I think a lot of A-size have folded, right?
Yeah.
Probably jack eyes have folded, right?
With kings and sevens and small pockets.
I'll go out on a limb and say, if we have bluffs, they aren't going to be for an all-insize anyway.
Hmm.
But I don't, I'm never bluffing here.
I would give up, honestly.
We, 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 okay, I was just thinking we unblock folds.
I believe we are gonna jam some spades, though.
Interesting, let us get up.
Lots of all-ins, so half of them gotta be gloves, right?
Where is the shoot now? Okay.
I don't know how to structure that range at all.
Okay, so I thought maybe we'd have some of these jamming, but it's more like ten-three.
Good, there's not many comas at two.
Yeah.
Uh, it's, you wanna have a jack which blocks the combinations that connect with queens and kings.
Yeah, and then you get better jacks to fold.
We go for, I mean, you're jamming. Go for a small size and it looks like.
See, I wouldn't think to jam queen, so.
Yeah, it's not even jamming, so Ken was right. Not jamming, bluffs, and then. Okay, so it's like, only using the worst jacks. To get better jacks to fold. And then so many sighs still in there as well.
And what size, half pot?
It's like thirty-five percent pot.
Small, yeah. And I guess we're using a lot of thin value bets too, right?
What?
And then we're going for thin value too, right? Queens are betting some.
Yeah.
Your worst kings.
Well, that's him.
Oh, that's him.
That's us. So we're not, so what is this ring?
A lot of all-ins for us.
Yeah, the kings are betting, that sizing sometimes, two pair.
Ah, the king's bet big and the queen's bet small.
Yeah, it's both two, everything is two pair, but not the queen nine. Alright. So find more check raises. I think we can check raise here.
Dude, I fold.
You fold?
Yeah.
Why?
Got nothing.
Yeah, but you can get better jacks to fold.
Yeah.
We have two backdoors.
You can get king eyes to fold, maybe, queen, uh, A-size for sure. No? Okay, maybe not, maybe this one.
So jack five. Jack eight, jack ten. Jack four, maybe.
Oh, you check five, yeah.
So jack three, but not jack deuce, okay, okay, let's say we had jack three.
Well, three can make a straight, well, two can technically too. Three's right, I wouldn't do three, I mean, four, you can make a seven-high straight, whatever.
This block here, it's doing like, bit of the same, right?
Yeah.
I low. Um, like. That one over card, a little bit of interaction, ten deuce, white ten deuce, but not jack deuce.
I don't know, and ten-five, I would probably way overdo.
Maybe, maybe.
Maybe these just have bad blockers.
Whereas jack deuce needs to go run a runner eight-ten in order to get a straight.
I'm probably not deep enough to do, to do that. Maybe if you look for, for six or eighty picks, maybe it will happen more, but I don't know.
Yeah, it'll start mixing in a small frequency to cover you on those runouts, but the ten has the direct touch shot.
Oh. Okay, we check raise and then he calls. And then we're in no man's land and then ace comes.
Bandit chip.
Give up. Hey, great.
Yeah, give up, this isn't our card, it's fine to mix in a check raise with a hand like this, but you gotta not overdo it by barreling too many turns.
Wow, he checks back the, the ace chair.
We scared him with our big check raise, so, say we had like king and spade three here.
Oh, oh. And this SP, and this stack?
If I king and spades, I would call.
Okay. Yeah, I can't lock them more.
I mean, I mean, we're not gonna raise much, I think, cuz like, we're too shallow, we wanna raise more of our flush draws rather than backdoors. I think. Oh no, we get to raise the spades.
Raises a lot.
So king and spade, anything here. Ace a spade. Anything, and then look at our like, we can even pick some hearts here, I'm, I wouldn't venture into hearts here. It seems like I could, nice.
So the offsuit kings were spades?
Yeah. But not all of them. You got back blocker properties between the four and the seven. And then the king eights is doing it again, king three is doing it. So you don't wanna block the bottom of the range when you check raise that bluff, yes? But it's still the king of spades, so. King of spades is a party here. And then you bet small on the turn.
Fold.
Well, what if you had the king of spades instead of the four, Lewis?
Uh. I don't know, it's A-side board.
Can you do it, you don't have an overcard anymore.
Yeah, I might, oh, that's.
If you have the king of spades, you're drawing to the nuts.
Hmm. I'm not sure, actually, I mean, it's, it's an A-side board, it's like a rebattle for us.
I'm doing it anyway. Let's see if he has an ace. Alright.
So, let's see where we're at.
No, no, let's just.
Let's find out.
Maybe he's checks and gives up on two.
Like, people, like, don't play back, people don't check raise enough, and people don't play back at check raise. They're gonna call too wide, I think, on the check raise, and then they're gonna fold the turn almost everybody.
Yeah, I'm folding.
I'll call, this one I'll fold.
That does.
King has spade?
Even cools sometimes.
Yeah, you could. But, they were supposed to find check raises.
I guess the guy's betting range, so you get to.
Yeah, for sure.
You get to fold out a lot of his range with the check raise.
Yeah. So fifteen percent check raise here.
Remember check raise, ace-eight suited as well.
Hey. Hey. Okay, alright. What do we do here? The pair board. We're on the big blind.
Yeah, we mostly defend by check raising, but tens are pretty good for his range still, I don't hate calling and. See what happens on the turn.
We got upper dangler to the pair card?
Yeah, I mean, it might raise some, actually.
There's not, there's not many good cards, though, man, like, like queen of spades, jack of spades, like makes a flush, like.
What about the ace, the king, the queen, the jack, that's pretty good cards for us, no? Even a nine, we could work with that nine, maybe an eight even.
I, I think I just fold here, without, without the backdoor flush draws.
I think we gotta find some check raise.
I mean, it's only, it's only one big, though, that's the thing, like, you have to defend a lot of our range.
That's true, we gotta, we gotta continue with a lot of hands, either by calling or raising.
Perfect, there's more.
At least folding, yeah, sometimes.
Need to find check raises.
I mean, the EV is very, EV is very low.
I think our check raises are gonna be very driven by a spade here, blocking his realization of value and our backdoor ability to get value.
Hundred percent agree with you, Pete.
So did you check raise?
Yes.
Cause you gotta bet big.
Louis.
I don't know, I think at least seven.
You pick up equity, so you're definitely gonna barrel.
But I'm not sure about missing.
If we had trip tens, we would probably bet small here, though. Cuz we can still just get it all in on the river by only betting four, with a stacked pot ratio of one bet.
I think I like four as well.
Yeah, I like four.
I like a check mom.
Like from thirty big blind, you don't really double barrel big when you check raise against a small bet, like, I'm under the impression of this.
Like, why would we bet big, like, we, we, we don't really want him to fold his flush draws, right?
He was using it a little bit, though, right? Twenty-five percent of it, huh?
I think we have, I think we have to value bet now, no?
Uh, yeah, we should, I think so.
I would block that.
That's small.
So first off, that's gonna be our turn strategy. On an eight. But it's not, not, see, the, the tendency is like small. Going small more than. And I think it's because of stagnate. Um.
Man, I think it's all-in or block bet, I'm not really sure what to do here.
Seven?
I think it's two or jam, but I don't really know.
Yeah, I like seven.
Uh, and it's right in the middle.
Hmm. And then what do we do against a jam on that seven, we just call, but it's like, ah, no, I think it's an easy call without blocking space, actually. Right, what can we check raise here, what, what will we need for our hand to qualify as a check raise here? Send the low offsuit junk part.
Ten-six.
Ten-six off, you think is good, with an eight?
An eight, yeah.
Ten-eight might be too good.
Ten-eight's a double, what, double? Yeah, ten, yeah, ten-eight might be too good, actually, what is.
Any, any five-eight type of thing?
Six-five.
Six-five, five-eight?
I, I think six-four's too weak, yeah, so.
So, I think, I think we're gonna check raise around cards that have value at the top, so king-jack.
Six-five?
Rather than, rather than, uh, like the bottom end, right, we wanna have better equity hands. So the overcard is an attractive option here.
Yeah, yeah.
Than the undercards, the undercards just wanna realize their straight equity when you start to get shallow. And the cards with the immediate ability to make a resilient top pair are gonna be more attractive check raises when you're shallow.
Like these, right?
Um, no, like, king-jack. It, you can see that one really, really wants to check raise. Right, jack-ten's in there.
I thought we were just asking about what six is.
They say you wanna overcard to the nine.
The ten-six was a great option as well, can't say that.
Yeah.
Okay. But ten-six here, just check raising last week. So seven, queen, queen, seven.
You can get a lie a little bit with this, I think.
Uh, like, both here.
No.
It's okay, but I prefer something like eight-six that has the overcard to the seven.
Now, what do we need here, what's the worst hand we check raise in the low offsuit part?
This one.
This, yeah, this might be it, like, I like that we have three in a row, that it's not like a, you know, it's a backdoor straight draw, but it's not a gappy backdoor straight draw, so it's a good backdoor straight draw.
The five-six-seven, you guys wanna raise it?
My worst.
Okay, I'm really not confident about this.
I mean, I think it's reaching, I think it's crazy.
Oh, it's gonna.
Yeah, it's starting to mix in one percent, that's a sign that it's costly.
Okay, yeah, maybe, what's the worst one if it's not this one?
Shoot it one, if we have to shoot it, one ball, right?
It's gonna have to be an eight X, I guess.
Would it take like six-five a spade, like Roger was saying?
Uh. I think that's the bottom.
Have you won suit, though?
Yeah, I think it might want the overcard to the seven too, so like, eight-nine of all three suits is gonna check raise, I would think.
Ten-eight? Ten-eight with the backdoor flush?
Um. Ten-eight might be a little too, like, the queen's just too disconnected, if it was jack-jack-seven, maybe ten-eight's a better one.
The ten is kind of a dangler to the queen, no?
Jack-eight, ten-eight, nine-eight, I think are all decent.
Do we check, do we check those any sevens about you, like A-seven?
Yeah, all seven checkers. Oh, look.
See, see, this is something I probably don't find the sevens check raise in here.
Oh, we said, I said ten-eight, I remember that, not a great check raise.
Backdoor flush.
Oh, great one, yeah.
We got the five-six of spade, suited ones.
Five, six-five a spade with the backdoor, so we have that, Ranger, that was good. Uh, the sevens are all raising for sure.
You just want, yeah, God, there's a lot of check.
The worst offsuit ten was like ten-nine, right, or ninety?
It's, oh no, this is pair.
Why did you take these two, because it's like above the seven, simple as that?
Yeah, you can make a new second pair and you can turn open-ended.
Ah, okay.
Right, the ten-nine can turn it with the queen and the seven, and the nine-eight can turn it, uh, with the set with the, a ten or a six.
Making a new second pair and turning.
Making a new second pair and being able to double-belly or open-ender on the turn.
Yeah, I like that.
Well, higher equity hands.
Six-five here is just pure trash.
Yep.
Yeah. Okay, what's the worst hand we check raise here? Do you check raise like enough offsuit ten with a spade in your hand?
Four-three of spades.
Four-two of spades, sure, easy.
King deuce.
King deuce, easy. But the thing is. Uh. Do you check raise an offsuit ten here with just the tennis pad?
Uh, you could do ten-eight, but ten-nine, or ten-nine might be too good.
Maybe king-nine's better with a spade.
Like ten-five, can you do ten-five here?
I think king-nine's a good one, king-nine with a spade.
King-nine for sure, Lewis, that's it.
Yeah.
But what about like the, the ten, can we pull up tens here?
I mean, ten-five might do it, I'm just not looking for these super marked, like, I'm not looking for these slippery spots.
You should.
Not anymore, it's not worth it.
You should. We can't check raise an ugly ten.
But only if you have the ten-eight of spade.
We, even that nine, I wouldn't find a nine.
Ten-eight I'm good with, I'm not doing ten-seven, ten-six, it's wasted.
Oh, we don't have pairs to see, no, okay.
Yeah, just a, a nasty ten. Okay, what else do we check raise? Flush draws, a lot of flush draws. The deuce.
King three, king four, king five. Suited.
The kings in general, the aces in general. Spades. Um, best spades are just calling. Then what? What? Okay, let's just fold and find something better. Same type of board, but this one is a little bit more fun. So a king-five of spades here is a good check raise, right?
Yeah, that's reasonable.
And then.
This is even reasonable.
Five-seven?
Maybe with the king of spades, this would be, yeah, better for sure, but this is, might still be reasonable.
It's, it's rainbow, so I don't think we use two. Related like strategies.
This could be a reasonable check raise, I think.
Why?
Well, you got backdoor straight draw on and over, and if you can get a fold right away with this garbage hand, it's pretty good.
Okay, yeah, 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 I see it, the eight is above, not so the six.
Are the kings above the queen?
Uh, maybe, big maybe, no?
Does not.
No.
I would never call, though, that's the thing, like, I can't just call that hand.
If you had a seven, a six, or a five, though.
More connected to the six and four. Okay, plays easier.
Yeah. And then.
And you get their king-eight to fold.
Seems to be picking spades more, am I crazy? At least on the king-seven.
I noticed that when you do, when it's rainbow board, it seems to choose, it's often the hierarchy of the highest suit first. So the queen of spades, the spades is the high, I see that a lot.
It's picking the spades here.
It's not a hundred percent, I don't think, but I do see this hierarchy when it selects suits on these boards.
Okay. One, he bets one now, what do we do, what do we, we call sometimes?
It's dead, right? I ain't calling. Alright, now.
Yeah.
You gotta bluff, you gotta bet. Yeah, I guess, I guess three, three's probably good. You get some.
Real money.
Thing is, it reminds me of Lewis's hand yesterday when he had the six. If the guy has pocket nine here, we're just value-owning ourselves.
You know what, it might bet one, because you might try to get called by ace-high, maybe.
That's what I think, you're black, you're going minimum, not, not greedy a little bit with your aim here.
Damn, I'm too greedy.
Oh no, oh no.
Oh, it is greedy.
It's a little bit greedy here.
I mean, this is a completely different spot than the one.
Yeah, yeah.
I had yesterday.
The, and EV is exactly the same, so like, you can't really make a mis- big mistake there.
Oh my gosh, oh wait, did you call this?
I guess he doesn't have very many worse states, but he definitely has some, right, he's ten-eight, nine-eight, stuff like that, so.
What do we raise with here? Do you have any fires with no spade that are raising?
Yeah, right here.
Okay. So like, if you have one spade in your hands, kind of easy to figure it out, right?
I would call.
You call every spade?
Yeah, I'll call if I had a spade and bluff if I'm not spades, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, uh, this is gonna be a very under-check raised, like, low-check raised board. Cuz you lack the sets, which really wanna check raise for value, so, you're gonna be driven by the six and the four.
We'd want a high card with our five, basically, not really like a naked five.
And it didn't choose the spade, right, the seven-five?
Seven-five off, no?
There's spade, yep.
Babe is calling for sure. Um. Yeah, yeah, all of these you can check raise with a spade, the five X, what's queen-six here?
God, it just, it just gets better stuff to fold.
It gets.
All their non-spade, king highs, ace highs, better queens.
It's clearly using the six and the four here, so it's straight interaction?
Must be. Box there continues.
Okay, so we pick combos that have straight interaction to bluff rings, to balance the spades in our hand, our range. This is a seven, so if it was a six, we would, we would raise more, is that what I understood?
Yeah, it was only a sliver, so we could pass.
If it's a six with no spades, you can raise more, but out of all the six, the one. If it's a six with no spades, we can raise more, but out of all the six, the one that raised the least because of the pair.
Let's get out of line since it does its levers and see how we play this, since it's unusual. Uh, I think you gotta bet again.
Yeah, this is really good for our check raising.
Hold on, he's got aces, man. I think I'm done.
I am as well.
He has aces, he has aces, but we have sixes.
Yeah.
Right, like, the problem with him is he's really handcuffed here with an ace, he can't escape.
Oh, I ain't folding an ace, though.
I know. Oh, boy.
Is he gonna turn, turn the pair into a bluff?
Do we bet two or?
No.
I'm just giving up.
Yeah, yeah.
Look at this. Are you on the half percent?
Uh, would've worked.
This guy's calling us with eights, eight, eight eye flush is snapping out.
This is an easy raise.
This is a. Okay, yeah, so you raise his five? As well?
Yeah, and the king wheels, queen wheels, jack wheels.
Or do you raise enough two jack wheel here?
Yeah.
That's ambitious, I think, no?
No.
Okay. All right, all right. Not that ambitious. I see what we're doing.
I'm actually overdoing it, cause a lot of these are only doing it a little bit.
Yeah. Very nice. Very nice. This is very, very nice, so we check raise very heavy on six X. Uh, seven X. And here, the board looks. Kind of.
Wetish.
Like, it's a low board, right, so it's not gonna happen often, but we check raise it like what, like twenty seven percent of the time? Pretty often, right?
Wasn't that, wasn't it? Wasn't it almost forty percent?
Uh, wow.
It was eighteen, so twenty six, yeah, twenty seven percent.
Why do you wanna raise a Satan king eight here?
He must be getting better aces to fold, I don't know.
He has, right, that must be it. Five point five. Well, yeah, we get one combo to fold. Right, let's leave the, the bushes. Raise this guy. No, we meant. So we're raising big, okay, okay. Ah, because of the nature of the board, we polarize more. Raising big, he calls king on the turn, that's not good. What if we change the suits and we have the ace of heart?
I think it's a brick for him.
Yeah, when we raise big, he shouldn't have a lot of kings here. And we do check raise some kings, so I think it's gonna barrel small.
Without the heart, you think it barrels here? Like this type of end, cause I would barrel if we had like the ace of heart. But this one, I don't know, I'm done.
We got all the two pairs, he doesn't have two pair. Other than six, four suited.
Do you think he? Do you think he floats a lot of king high to our check raise?
I, I agree with you, but I check raise to get ace side to fold. Think it's done already? Cause we raised big? If he has like ace nine, ace ten, ace jack, probably just folds here.
You think that we start getting a lot of his pocket pairs to, when we're really pressuring like his pocket fives, well, maybe not fives, but like pocket. Sevens, pocket eights, pocket nines, pocket tens, pocket jacks, like, starting to pressure them pretty good.
Disagree.
We can.
Calls uh all of them.
Yeah, but then he's gotta call River Jam.
You can look, uh, Louis, what, uh, what? The check race, uh, calls, but it got of calls with, on the check race. So, what is uh cut off continuing with?
Yeah, he might be three betting those pairs, right?
Yeah. I don't know, maybe.
I think it starts from the fact that he's polarizing a lot, and then if. Uh, the, the sim is locked into betting small. Whereas in reality, he's just blasting.
Oh, yeah.
Leave the bushes all in, and we move on.
No.
It's barrel, it's barrel small, though. Yep.
Three, four. Five, six. Seven, eight.
That's a straight.
I would be a pretty good straight, right? So. What about? Jack, five of spade here, no, jack, five of spade is, is easy, right? What about? Uh, jack of spade, five of club?
A fold. Yeah.
You wanna fold jack of spade, five of club?
That's full.
What about? Ace of spade, five of club?
Uh, easy. Ace and spade, five of clubs, check raise.
What's the worst offsuit hand we check raise? Probably has a straight interaction? A five or a deuce?
Maybe. I don't know.
Sixty seven offsuit.
Overcard the stuff, so we, when we can't do overcards, what do we pick? Straight interaction?
Seven, five.
Straight interaction, yeah?
Maybe six deuce of clubs?
Straight interaction, so we, when we don't have overcards, like draw rainbow with just big straight interaction.
And we could choose a few hands that make a new best second pair, like sixty seven here.
Ace, five. All of them. A queen four, queen three, so, four and three X. With what could be a new second pair, is that what? It's a straight interaction here, we, we got that, we got that, but that's not enough. The deuce. Didn't think about the deuce very much, did we?
Yeah. Six deuce of clubs was the worst one on check raises.
Six deuce, yeah, but nine deuce.
Yeah, I'm not finding a lot of it.
No, I'm not out there with the bombata, man, I know.
Nine deuce, you don't have that nine deuce.
I do not have nine deuce in my check raise game there.
So on these dry rainbow boards, it's gonna pick. Some bottom pairs and second pair.
Yeah, that's what makes it difficult, right? So if you're not finding, you don't really need all those other bluff.
Actually, tell you what, it's mostly like ace four and ace three with the overcard, that's easy to find. The queen four is a little bit more tricky here, queen three, queen four, and then these. Little bit more.
If you get rid of those queens, you can get rid of some of those twos probably. You can get definitely rid of some of those other bluffs that we're not finding, so if we're not finding all the.
Maybe, maybe I have an idea, like we block king queen, and then we block pocket four, and then with this one, king queen, pocket three? We block value. Maybe that's a thing?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know, man, I'm not buying it. It's probably good, though, cause like, if you think about it, like they always, back in the day, used to say like, it's hard to make a pair on the flop, right? So, eh, maybe it sort of pays to, like, if you hit a pair. And you have it over to at least two other cards, it might be, maybe it's valuable to actually raise them a bit more than I do. Which is never.
So mostly upper straight interaction. With a backdoor flush and an overcard. But it's like not even an overcard, it's like. Okay. Well.
Problem is, I never know when to raise, like I see it in Sim a lot, like raising second pair, third pair, but it doesn't always do it, and I haven't figured it out really. When and why. It might have to do with how many plus we wanna have.
This is a raise.
For him to bet small on this type of board, he must be not peddling. His pocket ten, ace nine, king nine, queen nine. Easy, 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 it's supposed to be polar here, no?
Yeah. It's a very wet board.
Yeah.
Lots, lots of bad cards.
Yeah, so this one is an easy check raise, what kind of size do we pick? Oh, okay, I see. Because all we are gonna polarize right here.
Yeah, like big. Big, big time.
Yeah.
Cool, seventy percent, I mean, that's cause the range is weird, I assume.
Snap check raise. Small? You don't need to polarize on these.
Yes, smooth, yes. I don't know, call.
Always raising.
Well, now. Thirty three.
Yeah, we pick up equity with the straight, that four point four.
Not here. A lot bigger, this is where it picks the, the big size.
Pressure tonight next probably, but it's never falling, I guess.
Only betting big. Is it betting big? On all the turns? Almost. A six, a five, what is this order of cards? What, what am I looking at? Six, three, deuce, deuce, what's going on here? What is this?
Broke.
Herring, okay, cards. Six, three, ace, king. What are we doing, Karen? I must have an option. One, I don't see. I'll figure it out later. A ninth on the river, we should give up, right?
Yeah, I think so. Yeah, we've now picked up showdown. Uh, can we have four?
Did he have a king all along?
I think spades is just really bad here. We block his bluffs with like our. Uh, six.
Spades not good, right?
Yeah. Too many negative blockers.
Can you really fold here?
Yeah, I mean, it feels.
Always. Do you need to call with your nine Xer?
Oh, really?
What, what nine X has a bad blocker, you don't wanna call with that, my ace nine?
Queen nine, maybe?
Nine with the ten of spades?
Check nine, ten, ten, no, I don't like that.
Like, nine eight is extremely clean? Uh, nine, seven, maybe? Or nine, eight, nine, seven? You need to call with nine, eight or nine, seven? Yes or no?
You need to call with nine, eight, because it blocks full houses, it blocks value.
Okay, nine, seven.
Nine, seven is probably bad. I probably couldn't.
Ace nine.
Fold with nine, seven, because your seven doesn't play as a kicker with a nine, so you can fold all of your nines that are worse than nine, eight. And call with all of your nines that are better than nine.
So the value of the kicker is good here, it's not gonna be blocker effect, like an ace is not a bad blocker here, it's a good value, eh? I, like, I card.
Well, a spade is bad, right? So all the spades are going to wanna push you to fold?
So ace nine is always calling, nine, eight is always calling. The queen. Queen is the bad blocker here. Nine five is calling. All right. Oh. Oh.
Just the boat.
Yeah.
Ooh. Oh, I like to check raise this one.
This one might just call. Like, if you get re-raised, it's, it's probably really bad with the ace of spades.
I don't think he's gonna raise back.
Okay, not that much.
I don't think raising back against our check raises a big strategy here for him. So, we raise small?
Wait, like figure?
Yeah, we can, we have a lot of raises, for sure. Let's say we raise small.
Probably if we had a pure, pure flush draw with the gutter, then probably it's like to call.
See, raising back is not really a thing.
Yeah, flush draws don't wanna call, it looks like, it's just some of these aces.
Then we have an overcard, a flush draw, and a card shots, so that's probably when I call. I guess.
I don't know what you're clicking, I, I hardly ever know what I'm looking at.
Follow the box here. About the flood, check, bet small, check raise, this is our check raising range.
Yeah, but when you click filters, like I thought, so that's our check raise range, right?
Yes.
Yeah, a second ago, I thought it was, I was like, oh, we already have any.
Yeah, that's his, uh, uh, we were looking at his calls. That's what I was showing you, once we check raise, he doesn't raise back. That's what I was telling you.
I was surprised you got, fuck, you got jam, you got jams here.
Totally five percent of the time, so. You say. We're in trouble when we raise here, but I'm saying he doesn't raise back.
Yeah, this doesn't, uh, uh, the real people might, but. This is only using ten, jacks, nine, eight or something.
Yeah. All right. So I think a bet four would be greater.
Do we check back? I guess not.
Without opposition, so.
Yeah. We check raised. We pick up equity, we're gonna barrel.
Yeah, an easy double barrel, I think.
Open four.
We checked back quite a bit. Fifty fifty.
This is.
We got blockers galore, I think we got a jam.
We gotta send in here.
Yeah, I can agree, I think we really wanna be both in a hand like this.
Who's with the bluff? I'm with the bluff.
Hundred percent.
I mean, yeah, like it's this node. All the copies.
Let's give it a try. Oh, yeah, sometimes.
Hundred, ten percent of the time, a hundred percent.
Yeah. Oh, he calls.
One thing we didn't block.
I probably just fucking check pool floor. I like to call here. To us to the second pair, backdoor.
Yeah, you wanna raise here? Seems spicy. It's hard, feels like people are not folding enough. Feels like I wanna have more straight interaction, a jack five here sounds a lot better.
It's high, so I think, uh, this time. That is fold.
He bets one, though.
Yeah, this is just a call.
I think it's a good call. Baltimore, yeah.
Gets me splashing around.
Yeah, when, when, when you're on the thirty, they get to splash around as much. With the, with the junky backdoors. I mean, this is a rate. Actually, this might be a raise.
I'm just calling here.
Yeah, that's fine, I know it's fine.
And then, what if we add six, four with the sixes, dude?
Oh, that's a raise. I think that's equity, that's the call.
This one is a call, and then six, after the six.
It's for the, that's some curious about the chair.
We don't even need a spade for six, four out. We're up, right?
I'm getting up.
We can even call sometimes. That's spicy, I recall, but sure. Uh, what do we do here? Uh what do we do here? Anyone raising?
No, just gone there, no.
So you. We're gonna like raise like single pair type of hands, right?
We don't get better.
And then pre flop, we didn't have like a skin, a screen.
Yeah, we're we're so hard capped here, there's no, there's no raising.
Yeah, like.
You don't think we just pick space, you think?
I'd never raise on this board, even with spades.
Are you raising top pairs? No top pairs at all, like single top pair.
I don't think we do on this type of board, right? Because it's also thirty big ones, we raised all our top pairs at like twenty, right? But then this is not dry enough, it's hot areas, it's just like, but like catching, right?
Our opponent has such a nuts advantage here. That it's just gonna be really hard for us to battle.
Okay. So we do raise this one, turns out. Like we we don't shove pre flop, we do shove like a bunch of our best aces, we need some top pairs in there. Right, this one is like, what do we have? Ace ten, ace nine, ace eight? So it's not only spades or it's always like some kind of top pairs as well. Then since we shove the best ones. Like our top is lower.
Yeah, I mean, like. Raising into this board, it's just pretty rough.
Not not at all, because Pete, this guy's just ranged betting.
I I get it.
If he has pocket six, no spade, you check raise here, what is he doing?
He should just stuff it in our face. Races me on this board, like they're just getting it, they're just getting a double barrel. Good luck. I know what your range looks like, you have nothing.
We can check raise with a single jack and scry word, a single tennis.
And then we get better answer for, but I don't understand why we bet with, we raised with the A seven, A eight. We don't get better answer for.
The top pair, it's just the top pair.
It's a race of value, so.
It's our best top pair, so three or four or five best top pairs are always raising somehow.
Alright.
At least the top three best top pair you got in your range. Like usually be a skin, his queen is Jack and then we would be a lot more. That'd be a lot less raising, but because of scenario and stack that, we just don't have them.
Check raise me on this board, you're getting the Burt Stevens treatment and you're getting clicked back.
Special.
Well, Pete, I'll be check raising you.
You're you're getting put, you're getting put in Burt Stevens' fault. Gonna get, it's gonna get a click or. Now what?
Now what? It's easy, we bet.
Value before, it's not value.
Your your hand got downgraded to marginal made. I think it's just a check.
Probably just a check, right?
That's more.
Raise and the flush complete my range, the barrels small.
I mean, we we have way more flushes.
But this hand is just like.
Yeah, but your range has junky stuff like a like a low jack X, was now fourth pair, it's like I'm okay with bluffing that hand.
A low jack X here. Jack four?
Yeah, they're in there.
Jack four, jack eight, jack nine.
Yeah, but like those aren't even really marginal made, a sex is marginal made, now jack X is kinda trash.
No, tho- those are your bluffs that you check with, right?
Oh, when the flesh completes and the four liner completes, it's just.
How do you like this disrespectful bet? Here you still thinking more.
No, we do not win, he just has a straight.
Check raise.
Okay, so what's the worst A two check raise here?
You check back the straight?
I think you call eights just like this, that aren't good enough really to raise for value and don't have straight interactions, so like you raise a lot of like ten eight that. That's gonna run out a lot of straights, you raise a lot of ace eight, which beats other eights.
I'd be surprised if this is not check raise, at least some, like.
Yeah, yeah, I think you like, I think like nine eight, ten eight, ace eight are the most, that's prediction.
I think ten eight and nine eight's the the worst one you check raise.
Yeah, it it might pick queen eight because uh ace eight, we're gonna be uh three betting pre flop. Might pick up the king eight, my queen eight here.
In Java eight six eight five.
A lot of space, I um um almost all states and that. Straight to their action, right? Six or five. And nine. Now we just check?
Yeah, it's pretty bad for our hand.
Keep floating a lot of jacks, not really.
We just cool. Build the flow. It'll be raised.
We should be betting most of the time on this turn.
Yeah, like the jacks kind of a brick for him.
No, no, we we are betting he's betting, you were looking at cutoff strategy. This hand checks like ninety eight percent of the time, it showed it.
Me king eight, AC.
That's right.
We check eighty five percent of the time, wow.
Yeah, because the when I run a flush completes, like we can bet if we have the card of the suit basically. Otherwise it's tough, right? No card of the suit. That's what you do. Alright, so the bets.
Feels bad.
I think we can fold. Oh, we can, wow.
Yeah, no space, I think we defend mostly based on space.
Yeah, or maybe some straight interactivity there, like having a ten or nine, still has a gutter. It's a pretty bad ace, we're gonna raise some of our best ones. This doesn't really qualify.
Yeah, I mean.
The spade is nice, we will raise a lot of single spade hands, but not really this.
I mean.
We'll we'll raise some seven X and eight X.
Okay, let's let's see how it breaks down the A six.
Ace jack is the cutoff, I bet. No, no, not at all, holy crap.
It's because the seven and the eights allow us to barrel when with the nine and the six.
It's basically a seven that's.
They hang in there.
A seven, A nine, A ten, the top three. No, no, it's done in A seven only. Because everything else is too bad. Okay. Then this square here. Of space. Calling. The six pair, can we do a little something here?
I think we just.
We have a pair option. It went to, yeah, you could bet.
Sometimes it does, it does the block.
We could a little bit, but mostly just to check it's fine. He checked back two pair, oh wow.
Oh, I was watching some videos about like AI playing AI in poker. And it said, oh, that they check back stronger hands in the solver land because they expect like. The opponent to have bluffs that humans don't find.
Yeah, that sounds, that sounds correct.
What's our worst check raiser? You check the six, seven of spade?
Ace four of clubs?
Yeah, ace four of clubs.
Four of clubs, Peter.
You asked for the worst, I'm getting in there, ace four of clubs, bottom of range.
We're gonna send you to lag jail, man, what the hell?
Yeah, but I'm thinking more like offsuit cards like. Junk.
How about like six four off? It's pretty bad.
Six four off seems like unfolding.
Nine ten.
Or a Jack ten suited, if it didn't raise pre.
Check that nine ten.
Uh six four can get after it for some slivers.
Seven six.
Free deuce.
No one had the trading. Four deuce.
Double backdoor.
And you thought I was loose. Ace four of clubs.
Now I'm gonna wait by checking down, by checking and calling three high, right?
So basically anything above a five that has a backdoor flash, that's what I see.
What was it, ace four of clubs or? I mean.
But the wheels, good, good, good spirit, the wheels. Yeah, anything above a five that has a backdoor flash. What's Jack ten offsuit here?
A pun, such bullshit.
So probably our lower equity hand. Uh the fives. So it's really that, right? And then queen four here.
Oh, this is great, like nine seven, nine, nine seven, A seven seems kinda, kinda crazy.
Nine seven is just two high cards above the the five with the backdoor. So it's a pair draw. And a backdoor flash draw.
We're defended by raising more than defended by cool.
Second pair backdoor flushed, uh raise.
It's a nine six suited here. Queen four, uh one of those four.
Diamond, diamonds and hearts.
Lewis. Are you serious?
Raise.
Wait, did did Lewis, did you say fold?
Yeah, he said fold.
No, we have a, we have a gutter.
I, you can call, it's a small bet, you can't fold this versus small bet.
Turn two of spades, river five of spades.
This one wants to call because we're gonna raise worse one, we're gonna check raise queen three instead of king three, king three has.
Okay, and then would you rather pick like the king and spade when you have a king three off combo? Yeah, definitely.
Yeah, king of spade seems reasonable.
A little spicy with the tree, but.
We don't wanna pair three, we wanna two.
This isn't really worth much here.
Oh my goodness, what is this?
Never has deuce.
Yeah, this is a bad call for us.
Check raise turn, blast. Okay, what's going on?
Are we just pushing the nut advantage?
Yep, yeah, we have, we have a deuce sometimes. Cutoff doesn't really play guessing game, you wanna call, you'll put all your chips in to find out whether we have a straight or not, let's go.
Okay, yeah, okay.
You like, you like games, you like guessing games?
How many sixes do we also have?
Oh my god, yeah. This is such a mandatory bluff, yeah.
Watch him lift us up with just like ace, ace ten.
I hate turning bottom.
Obviously, we just have so many straights here that ace ten is just, is just crying, ace ten is just miserable. Which even has a straight blocker to the the super nuts.
I'm gonna check raise this. Is it not a check raise? It is not. But ace four, ace three is deuce, which you get better, or I don't get better aces to fold, right? That's right, it's not a good check raise because ace nine, nine is never folding, no better aces fold here. My check raise is worthless. Well, we check raise, so let's change the move and just call Jake.
We check raised here, wow, we are wild.
We were wild, but we.
We check raised here.
I learned so much from Louis, people don't believe me.
Why wouldn't they believe you then?
No, I'm like. Yo, join.
Yeah, they, why?
Join, I'm like, join the study group with the mid stakes bros. Why not? And they're like, no, those are not, those are not high stakes people, I'm like, well, that's your loss.
It is fine.
I I wonder who these people are also, because it's like, as though the high stakes crushers want me in their study group, you know what I mean? Like, come on, like, let's let's all be reasonable.
I mean, Fadil's sending me messages on Discord all the time, man. How how you coming, how how you coming forth in the? In the four dollar bounty build of three thousand, three thousand people.
Come on, Lewis, pocket four. We raise her.
Wow, what the fuck is, oh, win, god.
I would just dump it, oh my goodness.
Oh my god.
What are we trying to get? We're trying to go by nine, are we, are we trying to value bet against nine?
Yeah, we're wild.
If you do this in game, I wanna see it in the Brex and Beats channel.
You just, you just chop every time, like, it's, okay. That's six, fine.
It's, does we lose?
Oh, we got two pair, two best.
I guess if you, if you bet six, maybe he still calls with a set. Right, like it's it's that threshold of what you get called by.
I didn't think we had much raises here.
I mean, eighty five percent cool.
Fifteen percent more raising than I thought, bottom pair, I ain't raising much.
I mean, we just check fold now, surely.
What? We have a spade, Lewis.
Steadard.
What am I looking at?
This is a bluff, you turn it to a bluff, surely.
Yeah, point one one E D, it's a bluff.
Is it the farmer's pay? What is it that we're turning into a bluff? The the spade uh portion of our hand?
I mean, a five.
I don't know, it's a spade. Really is a spade. We're blocking the six. We're blocking the six eye flush, the five eye flush. So aces out there, the five is here, so that means the nine is there. Actually, you know what? The queen is here, so what does he have? King six, king seven?
Seven nine.
It's actually, when you think about it, with this particular run out. It's a really good spot to bluff because aces out there, queen is out there. We block like king five, king nine is black, king queen is black. But it has to be king ten of spade here.
I mean, it's one, it's one of our worst hands as well, surely, this, this, this pair.
So what size did it go for? Seven, right?
Yeah, big.
So, okay, we gamble on the fact he doesn't have the straight here. Uh, he doesn't have the flush.
Like those of a queen?
Yeah, he calls with second pair. It's fine. Fine, because we're gonna check raise him here. Right? Is this not the prime candidate to check raise?
I think it's okay. It's probably a board that we check raise a lot, so you can go for it sometimes, right?
I think it's great.
You're gonna want, you're gonna want more straight equity blockers than ace four. You're gonna want like ace, seven.
Yeah, we have a lot of interaction on this board anyway, though, so you don't have to check raise everything.
I think it's, it's just because our spade is too low here.
Yeah, like, it's probably definitely gonna do the ace of speeds all the time.
Our five of spade is not great. Unless you have straight that, that, as people saying.
Yeah, you can see it, it wants to raise with, when you have a seven or a ten in your hand. Eight, ten, queen, ten, king.
Even the ten of spade is not that aggressive, right? It is when you don't have, okay, so having a nice. Kind of showdown, right?
Yeah.
But it's really picking those, the upper part of the straight that have a spade.
And a little bit of. Seven, five.
Silver cards with spades, which is an ace heart.
What's going? Are we gonna bluff the four spade? Are we gonna fold it?
And. I mean, probably not.
I mean, I was gonna say, I can get a bullfolded, like. Like his bluffs kinda got there, like, if he was bluffing with Jack I, if he was bluffing with a flush draw.
Yeah. Would you raise nine, ten and hearts here?
Yeah, nine, ten, the hearts.
It's a new second pair. The deuce is really disconnected from the queen and the eight, so you're only gonna play with cards between the queen and the eight, really?
Yep, I agree.
With a backdoor flush, anything in between that with a backdoor flush.
The, with hearts and spades, maybe not so much with diamonds.
All the high lows, like king five. That have like all the overcards, ace five, king five.
Um, no, because the, like, the wheel isn't gonna become part of the equity. You're gonna wanna connect around the eight better.
Maybe let go more ace five does have a backdoor to, um, effective nuts.
Wheels is the nuts here because you get better aces to fold.
Yeah, but like, king is gonna wanna go with like a, an, a nine, like, there's a lot of just king nine, king ten, king jack, that's gonna wanna go.
I disagree here, Peter. I think king five is right in the mix. Maybe I'm wrong. That's it. Yeah.
Yeah, but king nine, king ten, king jack.
Definitely, right?
Ten, nine, mostly jams, pre.
Like this portion here, this block.
Yeah.
Then, our top pairs. Down to the six kicker, wow, okay. They, they, these two are really frisky, don't you think?
They, they have backdoor straight interaction, right?
Oh, so you think it's because of the eight?
Yeah. The connection to the eight, and you're gonna block the continuations.
What could happen good with her with a six? I don't understand. Seven.
When, when an equity card turns between the queen and the eight, when your opponent picks up a straight draw, you're gonna have a relevant blocker to value. That's gonna help your queen showdown better.
Do you mean like a ten or a nine?
Yeah, like when, when. When a nine or a seven rolls off on the turn, your six is gonna be a blocker against your opponent's value that they pick up when they turn a straight draw.
So we're trying to block a portion of the deck that could make this trade, okay? How many fours do we check raise? Not that, probably not many, right?
Not on an ace sideboard.
I don't know, it's one of the spots where you start to see, uh, some weak fours show up as bluffs.
Should the cut, the cutoff not go bigger? See bet, because of the two brothers or not?
Uh, maybe, maybe that's a portion of a strategy in the.
It's gonna be two sizes lately.
Yeah, but now it's mostly small. Because of the stack depth, we don't really get the size up, but it was a thing.
Okay.
Still a thing, this deep, but less. How many fours do we raise? Any fours?
First, the opponent to see that's too much probably, but normally I fold.
Make the, like, make it like five, four of clubs. Or no, five, four of diamonds, you check raise.
I don't know, I think it's reasonable. I'm thinking about it.
Yeah.
No, what about queen four?
Oh, sorry, you got that. Yeah, that's better. Straight that direction with a little four above the jack.
Yeah, I mean, five four had that too. Five four is the wheel draw.
Yeah, as well.
Yeah. Probably both.
Uh, actually, we probably just don't raise fours here, am I right? And if we raise them, it's probably like.
Oh, yeah, you want the, the interaction with the backdoor straight? I think we have the wrong suits too.
Not many fours that are raising, a ten four.
Queen four offsuit, queen deuce.
Four deuce. Queen four, we have that queen four. Didn't know it was offsuit.
Yeah, you need a spade.
That's a different property.
Yeah.
Okay, queen five is more of a thing. No hearts here, right? No backdoors.
Those, those are also flushes, queen five and queen three.
Yeah. No backdoors, right? We call, but we're not really wins. That's why, I wanted to raise my four.
That's also bingo.
Uh, bet four, lead.
Yeah, you lead too.
Yep.
Hmm, I don't know, makes you.
Yeah.
These sizings are kinda weird for the donk. Like, I often see donks more like thirty-three.
Yeah.
The one's kinda too small for me and the other one's kinda too big.
Yeah, exactly, right?
Yeah.
Missing maybe something here.
And.
We're definitely gonna keep betting. We have nearly the nuts.
A ten?
I like, could go bigger, you know?
Seven?
Like, I think ten is as big as we can get. No, seven, Peter's on seven, I'm on ten, who else?
I like, I like. Seventeen all, I think.
Seventeen, Roger.
I don't know, I don't.
There's some, there's some natural blocks here, like, if we have any Broadway bluffs, if we had any spades. Um, this is, and this is like just the nuts, so we have some strong value, we have some big bluffs.
I mean. One big, like, you're just missing so much value. Yeah, I don't agree with the silver here.
Queen or whatever here.
The solver was brave for this to happen.
Yeah, just jam. I mean, I, I'm not betting. Whenever in my game, I'm not betting one big pile of trips.
He went red with queen ten.
First, the Russian Brazilian did that.
Yeah, he straight up attacking or block bet like it was nothing.
Is this a raise, Louis?
Ah. I say no.
No, queen of spades, maybe.
Queen of spades, not maybe, every time, every time.
Very good.
Ooh.
Ooh.
Louis, you're, you're, you're losing two big blinds per hundred.
I know.
Just money on the table, just giving it to the Brazilians.
Giving it, man, to this bad.
It's this guy with a Brazilian staking logo on his pro, profile picture.
So apparently someone's like, yeah, you know, um, you know, everyone's over bluffing, recreational, everybody is over bluffing. And then we found out he was talking about Brazilian cash players, and then everyone's like, wait. Does any of this have to do with the American tournament players? And he's like, no, we're talking about Brazilian cash players.
Wait, you're talking about thinking poker?
Yeah, that's what he was talking about.
That was such a weird point in the interview. Yeah, I was like, I don't think this is true.
And he's like, oh, it was actually Brazilian cash players he was talking about.
In, in the low stakes tournaments, the, the pit players are not over bluffing.
The day I listened to that interview, I had a spot where I was in a cash game where I was supposed to call down with a set, and it's like, supposed to be worth, you know, twenty-five big blinds for the river call or something. When a flush completes and like, he has the flush, obviously, right? Because like. Questionable if that call is worth twenty-five big blinds in my pool.
Hold.
Do we lose LP?
I'm here.
Oh, okay.
I'm just. Wondering if we raise this or not with the nine.
Yeah, it's kinda junky, but we do have three hundred straight through to the flush.
This is, yeah, this is gonna be a, a smaller part of the strategy. This is a big bet board for him, eh?
Had this stacked up?
And he stacked up, though, he's, he'll still have a bigger size, so I have like a, yeah.
I mean, this is Jack ten deuce, not Jack ten eight. Uh, I just fold, like, I mean, yeah.
All about three bets.
Folding is easy. Is this a good combo to?
I mean, if you're deep stacked, I mean, you can get a bit out of line, but you know, with, with thirty bits.
We check raise all of our spades, or a lot of them.
Yes.
Not a single space. Then we go by straight interaction. When we pick straight interaction, we're probably gonna go with the top first, right? The queen X, maybe king X. Do we need to pick up nines in there? We don't have an overcard to the ten. Yeah, probably just a foul, right?
No, no call.
Okay.
It's one percent face.
I'm, I'm fine with that.
Very small slipper.
But the nine of spade here, I have to raise, right? Overcard to the four. We can make a backdoor flush. Can make second pair. This is the nuts, am I wrong?
I think this is a fold, but I think we have centers, stuff to get there with.
Six, seven, six, for us.
This is not the nuts, Pete.
No, you're gonna wanna check raise with a three or a five in your hand, and then you're gonna wanna have a jack.
Are you sure? Nine of spades not good enough here?
Nine of spades isn't good enough. We're here with all kinds of ace, king, queen and jack of spades.
What if it's like eight, seven here?
I mean. We need free to a straight or an overcard at least. We don't have any of those.
So you need a jack here. Okay, okay, maybe that's right.
Yeah, if you, you need the jack of spades, or you need a three or a five here.
But would nine, three?
Nine, seven would be better. Nine, seven with a spade.
Would nine, three or nine, seven do it sometimes?
Nine, eight, I, I like nine, eight.
Yep.
Nine, seven, no. Nine, eight, yes.
Oh, nine, seven, no, okay.
Nine, three, not in range, buddy, sorry. Oh, that's easy.
Yep, best value hand, five point five.
Yeah, big sign.
That's a little bit, no?
This is the best one. You're gonna pick one to go big with, this is it.
Okay.
You've seen this before.
Nine, uh, good or bad?
That's a terrible thing.
Terrible.
Terrible, this is an atrocity.
I agree.
But you could check a bit, like, whatever.
Yeah, yeah, we, we can go check all.
But I think we go off, but, right? You, you guys are check calling now. I think we need last our top pair. They like he never has a nine, and if he has it, GG.
I mean, yeah, like.
Yeah, we're gonna pay, yeah.
The nine pair is really not good.
So our check raises that were suited base didn't pick up equity, so our check raises would check.
So you, you say a nine of diamond would barrel more?
Yeah. We, we, we would have some natural barrels because we, we would have some bluffs that picked up diamonds.
Yeah, this is a range trick, yeah.
Yeah.
Makes sense.
Well.
Oh.
Just not doing it when we hit that, that try and eat, I guess.
It's just an overcard.
It's not the suit.
Such a bad card.
Not the suit.
I mean, they just have, they just have way more lines than us, so they have the nut advantage. When you don't have the nut advantage, you have to check a lot.
Are you sure the three pairs, it's never happening, right? The three pairs, we just blast, am I wrong?
I mean, the problem is we're, we're capped, right?
Are we? We check raised.
Yeah, when the nine comes. Probably didn't check, probably didn't check raise many dimes.
Did we not? Yeah, really ten online, that's right. We don't have two pair, we have the full house or nothing. That's right. We don't check raise enough nines. If the nine comes, ooh, it's really bad.
Yeah, also for the sizing that we took, right? It's our best value, so.
Check, check on the turn. We gotta go for value, Louis.
Yeah, I think so.
Doing small.
I like a call, yeah.
I like a cool.
Alright. I misclicked.
Check.
Check, yeah.
Do we leave here?
No, not with this hand.
Yeah, we've, we've lots of leads, but not with this hand.
We have a pair.
Wow.
Then it's not, it's more value than, value lead.
Just because they're five pairs.
Generally, when the five pairs were much more polar with this strips on the board, where we're gonna be really po, we're gonna be really crazy with our fives. And really crazy with their draws. It looks like it's betting eight.
It's just a basic of rage.
Oh, I guess the five is just so. Oh, I guess the five is just so good for us, that we can do, but our overbets, it looks like our overbets are still.
No, no, if it's not using big size.
Oh, our big bets are, like, the, the brown size, the bet for.
That's fifty percent.
So, so a half pot and then tiny?
Yeah. Even, like, it's just.
So then.
Maybe not much sizing here. But yeah.
That's really cool, so don't bet huge, because we wanna bet everything.
Yeah. Bet small on a five, yeah.
And since we can bet everything, we can bet the ten.
Yeah. And then bet again. But maybe size up, yeah. Because our five wants to size up a little bit, no?
And we block some of their draws.
We're trying to get paid.
Sixes, sevens.
Check, check just not second.
The, the person on ACR that has this marked as a maniac, and then, you know, they just call us.
It just feels like, when the five pairs, we just double barrel a lot. Not trying to get called by worth here. And I just like think, like, after we bet and he calls. He's so cat. And we have so many fives, how do you, how do you play a five here, Louis?
Uh. Bet seven.
And see, that's where I'm at, kind of. You know, with this ten as well. And I'm not.
I mean.
Some black bet.
I like, one, one makes sense.
You allow them to spazo with spades or a straight draw.
Yeah, but I would like to have some value from pairs that are on with that. That's why I wanna go bigger.
I mean, I don't think our hand's worth seven.
What are you wasting, huh?
It's worth one. It's not worth seven. I think if you have a good kicker, you, like, like, you can bet bigger if you go, like, the king ten, queen ten, you can bet bigger, because you get worse tens to call.
That's right. But otherwise, it's just, it's just worth one, as you say, right? Let's really kick her again, then. Our kicker is strong enough, you can do it.
Does our opponent has a little pairs there or not?
The cutoff is like, uh, ten queen, because it's betting all the jacks big.
Yeah, so the seven, six, and eights. I want to get value from, from betting five. And. Yeah, but that's my, way of thinking about it. Well, it's fine. Solver says it, so it should be true. The almighty solver.
What about this one?
Yeah. Uh, I don't know.
Fold.
Yeah. Yeah, probably fold.
Alright, anyone else?
We have a backdoor, though. But it's very.
Hold this.
You bunch of nets, we have the queen of spade, how could we ever fold?
Yeah, well, I'm small bet.
This is the nuts.
Feel so fishy, man.
This is the nuts.
Nah, but like, he's, he's range betting, he has like ten nine of clubs here sometimes, he has like pocket fours, like, he has nothing.
I like, I like it if you have. Louis, queen, queen five? Or queen eight here?
And we have, had, extra.
Okay, so this might not be the nuts after all. Upon review. Queen three might not be the nuts, but queen four.
Queen five is the nuts.
Queen five, ah, yeah, 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 yeah.
And queen eight.
What a hell of a.
There you go. The super nuts.
Yeah, so straight interaction.
Yeah. Great interaction, flush interaction, nude second pair.
Nude second pair with a queen, right?
With the queen or the eight, right? Like, that's why the eight even does it more than the five.
But that's why it's picking queen nine, okay, okay, and then queen jack, not so much.
Queen jack's too good, it just calls.
No man's land, we're gonna shove and move on. Thank you. Uh, I don't think we can do something here, dude. Alright?
Yeah, I think that's a little.
What about ace ten or ace seven?
Oh, cool.
Ace ten, ace seven of diamonds.
Who?
You don't raise ace seven of diamonds?
Hmm, no.
Why?
I prefer to have a ten or a jack.
I, I don't think, if.
Or a king, or.
If you have a seven, the answer is, you don't get better aces to fold. Right? Ace ten, ace nine, ace eight, ace jack, everything connects here.
Yeah, I, I think you really wanna have like king ten, king jack. Be hammering here.
So straight interaction, right, ten. Then is a, a ten or a jack.
Yeah. The king is an over two. So.
So jack five of diamonds here.
Yeah, that's, uh, maybe jack six of diamonds. So you get the straight on both ends.
Oh, we gotta be. We need.
Jack six of diamonds.
A straight card with the backdoor flush, the jack with the ten. Pow.
Well, ten deuce, ten deuce.
Top pair, so we knew that already, so I really like that we figured out straight interaction. Is really important when it comes to check raising. Alright, thanks a lot for watching, everybody.